Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed. We are continuing with item 7.6. Consideration of a presentation from the cyanobacteria Communication Work Group, multi-agency members. And with us today, we have Angela Dow from Water Resources. I want to check in and see that Director Deleon is here with us, if he wants to kick it off, or if he wants to just pass it off.
I'll actually be leading the supervisors, Denise Pomeroy, Health Director.
Go for it.
Thanks, Scott. I'll tag you next time, Scott. Hi, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Community. This is Denise Pomeroy. I'm going to try to share my screen here. We have a... Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me get back to my notes. We have a multi-agency workgroup update for you regarding cyanobacteria and Lake County. In July 2017, and again in 2018, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to establish a county-wide strategy in coordination with incorporated cities and the county for long-term all-sector approaches to HABs and to develop a system for regular factual and consistent messaging to businesses and the public regarding HAB-related issues. With you today in your boardroom, this has been a collaborative adventure for the last several years with both of the cities, Big Valley Rancheria, Aleem Indian Colony, and of course, multiple departments within the County of Lake, including Water Resources, the Health Department, Environmental Health, Parks and Recreation, and Media, PIO. Also, we did for a while have one of the Economic Development Members on our committee, as well as we came up with strategies to make sure that we were also considering economic development practices. Our goals for the presentation today is the introduction, which I just gave. We have three or four people in your boardroom. I know Angela is there, Sarah Ryan, I'm not sure who else, Marina may be there, and maybe Scott. We've already given this presentation to the city of Clear Lake, and we will be giving it to the city of Lakeport, I believe, at their very next meeting. So progress to date impacts current conditions. So the background and the purpose of this presentation is to give your board a much-needed update. Due to COVID last year, we were not able to get to your board over the summer with an update, so we're here today to do just that. You know, Lake County has the most valuable asset as its natural beauty and its lakes surrounding our landscape. Addressing the challenges of HABs requires a coordinated effort of all of our stakeholders. Uniform educational and fact-based communication to the public has been key over the last several years of letting the public and our businesses and our partners know what exactly is going on with the lake. We went from a reactive mode to a proactive mode, and we communicate with all the sectors of the community that are impacted. We've developed uniform and consistent communications, flyers, brochures, postcards, and we address those through social media and other avenues out to the public. And, let's see, it's not... Hold on, let me try this one more time. I'm not sure my slides are moving. There we go. All right, so what is bacteria? I'm going to turn this over to Angela.
This is... Okay. Thank you, Denise, very much. Thanks for having me here today. So cyanobacteria, they are not an algae. They are a bacteria. However, they are capable of photosynthesis. So that means that they take in CO2 from the air, and they produce oxygen that goes both into the air and the water. Now, some of these cyanobacteria are capable of producing hazardous toxins, not all of them, and we really don't know why sometimes they produce toxins and why sometimes they don't. But one thing to note is that cyanobacteria, like the green algae, which are beneficial for our fisheries here in Clear Lake, that we depend on for our economy, are... show up from the same conditions. So our rich, warm waters along the shorelines, very productive with green algae, and nutrient-rich waters we have here, promote the conditions that are favorable by both green algae, which we prefer for our fisheries, as well as the cyanobacteria. So we really can't have one without the other. The, you know, years that we have these record fish catches and these record tournaments sometimes are the same years that we have these record cyanobacteria blooms. So these are both things that we care about, that are important, just in very different ways. So when we talk about a harmful algal bloom, and again, not necessarily algae, we're talking about cyanobacteria, what we're talking about is when the conditions are so favorable, very warm, a lot of nutrients, shallow, still waters, like we have this summer, exactly, we're going to get overabundant growth of cyanobacteria. And so we get a lot of these productions of cells, very abundant growth, we get what's called these blooms that we can see. The probability of that much material, that much cyanobacteria producing toxins goes up. So we're more likely to have toxins in these bloom events. However, that's not always the case. So we could have a bloom and not have toxin levels, and likewise, we can have pretty clear water that may have toxins present. And so it's really important that we rely on this monitoring data that the tribes do, and Sarah here will talk about it, for us to be able to determine, is there toxin present in the water? Is it of a health hazard level? And then we can provide the right messaging, which is what we're here to talk about today. And again, we're not talking about algae, we're talking about cyanobacteria. Okay, thank you.
So this is the group of stakeholders that has been working with us over the last couple of years, since we put this workgroup together. And as I said earlier, it's been a very collaborative effort over the past several years. We've developed templates and brochures and signs and permanent signage and temporary signage. So I really want to compliment all of the members of this group. They've all done a really great job of coming together and building up this workgroup to what it is today.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Ryan. I'm the Environmental Director and Emergency Management Director at the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Thank you for including me in this group. I've been really happy to be a part of this messaging workgroup for the last several years. It's great to be able to get on the same page on this issue that affects us all. As this slide states, cyanobacteria is a global issue. If you look at what's happening in China, if you look at what's happening in Florida, in many parts of the world, there are cyanobacteria blooms that are impacting people. Of course, what we're feeling is what's here on Clear Lake and other water bodies in the county, but it is something that we're all dealing with. And so that's why it's important for us to have programs to limit the amount of nutrients going into the water, as Angela was just stating, and also for us to be aware of the harmful impacts that could be occurring, because we want to take care of our people. We want to take care of our animals. So the toxin monitoring that the tribes do, the program that Big Valley and Aleem started in 2014, and that we continue to this day, is another important part of the public health messaging that comes out regarding cyanobacteria and their toxins. What you're seeing on the map there is a state reporting site. It's mywaterquality.ca.gov. And you can go to that website, and actually, so you can see Clear Lake in that, and you can see a lot of... We have a lot of monitoring sites. We've got more than 20 monitoring sites on the shore. And then we also collaborate with Water Resources and also UC Davis to get some interior sites. And the sites that we chose on Clear Lake have to do with high recreation sites, or some other sites such as gathering areas for tribes, you know, areas where there are septic systems or a lot of toolies, because we wanted to see if there was any differences in the toxin levels and in blooms. But this is a program that we've been growing over the last several years, you know, since 2014. If you click on this site, you will be able to see every water body in California, it's a California site, and what the toxin levels are at that time. The state has actually grown in their transparency of communicating this message as well. So it's a good tool for folks. You can also report blooms in this area. We'll talk about that a little more in this presentation, but it is a way for you to look, if anyone's traveling, they can go on this site and see what's happening in terms of cyanotoxins in those areas. However, not all water bodies in California are monitored. The Clear Lake is actually the most heavily monitored water body in the state of California, and that's because of the tribal program and our desire to see what's happening in various parts of the lake.
Hey, we're going to turn it over to Scott now.
I am Scott Hornung. I'm the Deputy Administrator for Special Districts. This is Slide 1, Potential Impacts Due to HABs. I'm going to speak to the water utility issue. There's definitely an increase in O&amp;M costs associated with the HAB blooms. There's an increase in chemical costs, in filter backwash intervals, in plant runtimes, in manpower to man the plants when they're running, as well as testing and sampling costs that are associated with the mandate now to test for the microcystin. This all results in the people who are getting their water from utilities that draw off the lake are paying a higher percentage of their gross monthly income to pay for water as do similar surface water systems across the state. And most, if not all, of these communities are disadvantaged. So we get a little double bang there. That's it for me.
Okay, back to me. There are resources available for agencies to communicate with the public regarding cyanobacteria risks. For example, this is the Four Steps to Effective Cyanotoxin Communications. It is a toolkit that was developed by the Water Research Foundation and American Water Works Association. This is the toolkit we use here in Lake County to tell us when to post, you know, different signs, when to take signs down. So there are lots of resources that have been developed over the last several years. All right. So there are health impacts to cyanobacteria. It has... We have several different things that can happen. It can be very much like allergies. Some people can have no reaction to it whatsoever. Some people can get, like, skin rashes, or some people can have, you know, breathing and real serious health impacts, nausea, vomiting, and other things. It's really critical for animals, especially smaller animals and dogs. They tend to be in the water with their mouth open, they tend to lap up the mats, and when the cyanotoxins are present, they can be extremely harmful. We do have a program where we work with all of the medical providers and veterinarians in the county. We send them out updated information every summer, and when there is an incident that is reported to Public Health, the Water Board, and the Water Resources, and the tribes, so that we can go out and do a public health safety investigation to determine if there's anything linked there. Part of the surveillance of the human and veterinary health impacts is, there really is a lack of clinical tests. There aren't any yet medically-developed tests to actually test and confirm cyanotoxins within humans. So it really is more of an investigation to see if we can tie all the dots together and form a conclusion of a potential or possibility. In animals, it's a little different. There are some tests. They typically are performed under an autopsy when an animal has died. We have had this done a couple of times over the last many years in Lake County. Three that I am aware of, there may be potentially more that were never reported. And there's a big under-reporting of this. We go out to the lake, it's summer, it's hot, we have fun, we're eating, and, you know, maybe the kids aren't feeling good, they're nauseous, they have a rash. And a lot of people will just kind of brush it off as, oh, it's too much fun in the sun, and, you know, too much eating, whatever, that day. But it is... It does have some real human and animal impacts on health and safety. So we do want to make sure that cyanotoxins, if somebody has been in any natural body of water, whether it's Clear Lake or whatever, and they come into a clinic, or an ED, or an animal ends up in the veterinary office, we want to make sure that we're at least looking to see if they've had any exposure. We have physician references. These are out all over the county. I do believe Angela gave you guys some presents up there earlier. And we do, like I said, send these out to all of the clinics, all of the EDs here, and then we have a different version for animals that we send out to all the veterinarians, just to keep it in their forefront of their mind during the warm summer months. So that's just the backside of that same little brochure. So the public health progress. This really has been, as I said earlier, a collaborative effort. We hear all the different players that routinely participate. If we have invasive species, Angela refers the patient to us with medical symptoms, whether it's called in to the My Quality Water Board, or whether we get a report directly from an ED physician, or if somebody calls Water Resources or Sarah Ryan and says, hey, my dog is sick after playing in wherever. So we do have a environmental health and public health surveillance process that we go through to do an investigation like we would with any other outbreak or disease in Lake County. And then we work very closely with the regional water boards that provides us many resources for both human and animal health exposures. And I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah.
So the signage that is on the screen is signage that you might be familiar, seeing at some of the signs on the lake. These are recommended signs that the state came up with that has familiar icons. They've kind of tested those icons to see if people of different language groups understand them. And they are to... There are certain trigger levels of toxins that are correlated to the signs. So those signs go up when there are caution levels of 0.8 micrograms per liter of microcystin, all the way up to almost six micrograms per liter of microcystin. And the caution signage is basically the biggest thing about the caution signage is you shouldn't be eating any shellfish from that area. The rest is okay, but you do want to keep kids and animals away from any mats or any blooms that you see. So that's the low level of toxins. The warning signage is... Actually says no swimming. There's also more care you have to do in terms of eating fish. You've got to throw away the guts, and you need to wash it off carefully. The warning signage is put up when there are six micrograms per liter of microcystin, all the way up to almost 20. At 20 micrograms per liter and higher, the danger signage is recommended to be put up, and it actually says to stay out of the water until further notice. We've had plenty of danger levels of cyanotoxins over the eight years that we've been doing this. Actually, the highest level was almost 17,000 micrograms per liter, and that was in 2014 at Clear Lake Oaks. Certainly, a lot of toxin levels in the thousands, but most of the time, and actually, we've had several years where the toxin levels were extremely low. There was one year that there were no toxin levels above caution. So it really depends on what's going on in the lake. As Angela mentioned, it varies, and so just look for the signage, not only at the place where you're recreating, because there are those signs out there, but also we have these signs in our Clear Lake Water Quality Facebook page, and also on the maps that we produce that have the toxin levels on them.
All right. So some of the workgroup progress that we've accomplished since the workgroup was formed in 2017, 2018, was we've encouraged and supported the continuation of the tribal monitoring that Sarah spoke about. And several of the members on this workgroup are part of the local cyanobacteria task force, as well as state cyanobacteria groups. And it is a multi-agency collaboration. So the cities have representatives, of course, different departments within the county and the tribes, and to keep these workgroups going regularly throughout the season of cyanobacteria, but also the off-season, is pretty significant. And together, we've worked on, you know, successfully putting together the signage, getting it produced, getting it distributed out there, both the permanent signs that are around the lake, and then these temporary signs, and getting them up when there is an event, and then taking them down when there isn't, right? We don't want sign fatigue. That's a really important thing. So when there isn't anything come up within the samples at the area, we do want to take the signs down in accordance to the state-recommended time periods. And then, of course, we've produced some educational materials, some of which I provided to the board today, and that are available on our website at Water Resources webpage, as well as Environmental Health, and some of those brochures, to give people some information about cyanobacteria and what it means for swimming, for kids, animals, as well as irrigation or livestock, as well as with fish. And then, one thing that we do is every year and throughout the season is we update our websites. If there's... We test all the links. We make sure all the most recent resources from the state and federal agencies are available on those websites. And the press releases. So at the beginning of the season, our public health officer will send out a press release to the community, letting everybody know, you know, there is the season for cyanobacteria, and here's where to go to get information, look at the signage. And then we also send out press releases when there is a concerning bloom event, based on the monitoring data that the tribes provide.
On your screen is the tribal monitoring page, bvrancheria.com/clearlakecyanotoxins. And you see the map, that is the most recent map of the toxin levels. There should be another one out shortly, as soon as we get the lab results back in the next couple of days, from our July 14 monitoring event. This... The... You can see, it's a little bit hard on this screen, but you can see some colored arrows, and those colors are based on the toxin levels and the signage. Actually, that was an idea of Denise Pomeroy some years back. I always thought it was a great idea, because it's a good visual for people. So the yellow markers are the caution level, the orange markers are the warning level, and the red markers are the danger level of cyanotoxins. So this last sampling event, June 21, that we have results for, have two danger levels on the lake, and that is Aleem Indian Colony, and also Shady 01, which is right off of Cache Creek. But you can see in the upper arm of the lake that there are three green sites at Lakeport, at Fifth Street Ramp, at Big Valley Rancheria, and also Lucerne, that have green arrows, which is below the caution level. So you can see that even though we've had this terrible lingvia bloom, it's not necessarily a toxin producer, but it does have other impacts, obviously, to the community, and also, as Denise mentioned earlier, possible allergic reactions that are not toxin-related, but just allergic reactions to the cyanobacteria. These results from our July 14 sampling event, I'm very interested in, because the lingvia was dominating at this last sampling event, and so we're testing for three different toxins with that one. The next slide. So the CC-HAB Network, that's the California Cyanobacteria Harmful Algal Bloom Network, is the state network under the Water Monitoring Council, which is part of the State Water Resources Control Board. And the CC-HAB Network is actually this great collaboration between academia, governments, and businesses on water quality issues, particularly relating to harmful algal blooms. I am a co-chair of that committee. I think I'm three years into being the co-chair, so I think that's a great resource for all of us who are looking at HABs, that we have links to the most current research, to the resources for mitigation, and also just, you know, what's happening in the business world and also in academia. So it's a good group. It meets quarterly. The next meeting is actually tomorrow, from 9:00 to 12:00, and you just Google CC-HAB Network and go to the... Go to their meetings page. I won't be on it. I have another call, unfortunately, but we do meet quarterly. The other thing is, you know, we do make use of the satellite imagery that the state has made possible. There's a couple different satellite tools that are available, and you can look... I'll give you a URL. It's not on this website here, but if you go to F-HAB, that's freshwater harmful algal bloom, so F-H-A-B dot S-F-E-I dot O-R-G, and you can look at the satellite imagery of the fluorescence of cyanobacteria that's being picked up by the satellites, and you will be able to see, if you look at Clear Lake right now, it's quite high in this fluorescence. Doesn't mean there are toxins, but it's what everybody knows, there's blooms. I think this one's yours.
All right. So this is a page and a resource that's been further developed and refined with help from the CC-HAB group that Sarah just mentioned. So this is the mywaterquality.ca.gov webpage, and particularly, this is the HABs Harmful Algal Bloom Portal. And what I want you to focus on here is, on the right-hand side, under the toolbox, is a report of bloom link, and that's in red. And so when someone calls me and they have some potential health hazards, so for example, last few weeks when the blooms were really bad, and there were strong odors, and people were having potential respiratory illness with breathing in the strong odors, there's not much research on that. I don't have a resource to go. I don't have literature or information on that. But what I can do is direct them to this report of bloom, and they can click on it and fill out a form, and it goes right to the state, and they have a dedicated team and staff that are interested in that data and have more resources available to be able to investigate. And so someone will look at this, click on that, fill out the form, and they'll get a call back very shortly from the state staff, and then they'll direct down resources and guidance for us, both at the public health office, and at Water Resources, and our partners at the tribes. So it's a really good resource that I've been, you know, sharing with people that call from the public, just because it helps collect some of that data, so we can get stronger information that'll help us, you know, guide those that are dealing with these cyanobacteria blooms, in different ways, not just skin exposure, but also respiratory with those strong odors, that I'm sure you've noticed, right? Okay.
This slide is highlighting the permanently-mounted signs that are around the county. There's 30-plus of them at all recreation and all jurisdictions. They give information about how to recreate safely in and around water that may have HABs in it. There's also contact information for public health, as well as water resources, and there is a link and also a QR code that you can scan with your phone that'll take you to the most recent sampling data from Big Valley, so you can make an educated decision on whether or not to let your pets in or a family get into the water in those recreational areas.
This map shows where those signs are, and we have, as Scott mentioned, we have it in all jurisdictions, and those signs also get regularly updated with the caution, warning, danger signs as appropriate, so people can go to those sites. We don't have signs on every single square inch of the lake. It's not feasible. So basically, if people want to know kind of what's happening in their area, they should be using what the toxin levels are at their signage, at the most recent signage.
And some additional outreach that this group has produced, as we talked about earlier with the press releases, we also provide information for articles and post any recent information on our websites. We've also developed these brochures, both in English and Spanish, so they can be found digitally on the County of Lake Water Resources webpage. We've also distributed them to the Community Chamber of Commerce, as well as several bait and tackle stores and other venues. We also have them here available in the courthouse in the little kiosk by the elevators. And then we do have some radio and digital PSAs that go out. So for example, this is a picture of one of the digital PSAs. It's a visual PSA with a little doggie on it, and they're going out both on our Facebook pages. We did an advertisement, a paid boost, to send them out with support from public health, so thank you. And then we've also done another digital marketing, so sending it out outside of Facebook. So anybody, you know, that's scrolling on sites, shopping, there might be a little ad that pops up, and that's the digital PSA, just to let people know it is cyanobacteria season, there's some risk involved, here's where to go to get more information. So we talked about Facebook already for county, and then Sarah mentioned the Clear Lake Water Quality. So this is where they post their most recent test results, photos of what they're finding in their water samples, as well as site photos. And so this is a great resource for any of those that are using Facebook. And I must say, their county, we're kind of lucky in that we've all developed this love for Facebook, so it's a really easy way to communicate directly with the public, and that is not the case for much of the rest of the country. So we really utilize that resource and follow that Facebook, because the monitoring results are available right away there. And then, as Scott mentioned, we have QR codes on all of our signage, and then all our websites provide links to all of these resources, so people will be able to get them from one stop there. And that's the Water Resources webpage, cyanobacteria, which is linked to, if you go to the main County of Lake go to the main County of Lake website and you scroll twice, you'll get to that little cyanobacteria information, which is up right now, that you can click on, will take you there.
I'd also like to put a plug for these small drinking water systems, actually, private systems is the more appropriate term, and those are for those households on the lake that have one to four service connections, so they're linked to one to four homes. There are approximately 300 homes that have, that pull their drinking water from the lake and have various types of treatment. Many people say they do not drink the water, however, they're still showering in it and using for other purposes. We are working at Big Valley Rancheria, we're working with Tracking California on a tap water program where we're testing folks, our participants, tap water for cyanotoxins as well as some other contaminants that could be in the lake. We have about 50 participants. This flyer is informing people about how to not only test their water, but to be aware of some of the things in the water that could make them sick if you're using those small drinking water systems. So this does not apply to everybody who's on the public water system, which is about 65% of the county gets their drinking water from the lake, from a public water system. But these private drinking water systems don't have as much treatment, and so therefore, their water is a little more at risk. And so, look for this brochure, it's on the county's website, and we had help from the State Water Resources Control Board to put it together.
So, our next steps, you know, we have more private, the permanent metal signs available. We had bought extras for replacement. We are hoping to get some of the homeowners associations and other private properties around the lake who typically have cyanobacteria blooms in their area. If they want to post a sign up on their beach, they can contact Water Resources and we can provide that. Continued communication, it's always an educational learning, you know, we learn every day about different things that happen. The continued monitoring from the tribes is so important, they basically, they started this, you know, back in 2014 when Dr. Tate was here, and they've just done an amazing job throughout the years and really looking out for the health and safety of our lake, our residents, and our animals. And then, we always want input from our community leaders, and that's why we have both cities and different county departments on the work group, because we want to make sure we're really communicating at all levels for the public. And with that, for our last slide, so here are your contact informations from Lake County Water Resources, Public Health, and the Big Valley Band of Homo Indians. And at that point, that ends our slideshow. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for this presentation from everyone involved. Any comments or questions? And yes, I think we've all smelled or experienced the algae, and this year is reminding me a little bit of, I think it was 2012 or 2013, where it got pretty bad then too, and I think we started seeing some better years, but we're going back downhill at this moment in time. Hopefully, we will see a change in our drought situation, which will increase the level, make it more difficult to warm up the body of water, which makes it more difficult for this type of algae to grow. But we are in a perfect storm at this moment in time, and some are definitely much more affected than others, depending on the flow of the lake and if it's getting caught in their coves or not, so. Any, yes, please, Supervisor Pyska.
Well, I really appreciate the collaboration from so many groups working together. This is really important information for our community and for the research, too. I was looking at the FHAB site that Sarah mentioned, and I don't really see any other bodies in California that glow this way. So that's kind of shocking. I see a little bit here and there, but that's pretty significant, and that, I think that points to the need and the level of research that we have going on in our lake right now. And I just want to mention that I got to go out on the sampling mission and help, so it was really important for me to see how that process works. So thank you, thank all of you, and Denise as well, for this continued collaboration.
And if I may, just to add to the glow on the map, I'm not the expert, but I believe that our average depth is about 20 to 30 feet. Am I incorrect on that?
27, yes.
I would suggest that compared to other bodies of water, that that's not always the case. And so, we're fortunate enough that we still have water in our lake in comparison to others that are seeing a real reduction in their acre feet of water left over. But at the same time, it's the shallowness that really, it gets warm before it can really dry up, and so that's what creates the algae. So I think that's probably one of the major reasons that we see our lake glowing. Please correct me, Kamala.
Also, the smaller lakes aren't actually picked up by the satellite imagery. There has to be, I forget, it's at least 30 acres to be able to not be interfered with the land around the water. So there are a lot of water, but it's, that aren't picked up on it.
And I'd also add, you were correct, and you talked about the low water levels and no dilution from the rain, and that's exactly what Clear Lake has, that a lot of these other lakes that are larger don't have, in that we're looking at reservoirs, right? Every year, a reservoir drains most of its water and then gets replenished again. That's the whole purpose of the reservoir. Clear Lake is not, does not function that way, and those reservoirs are 60 years old, maybe 100 at the most. Clear Lake is 500,000 years old. She's an old lady, she's got a lot of health baggage, and she doesn't ever fully replenish, and that water never fully drains. Even in the drought, we're always going to have that water in that nutrient-rich base there, and so that's all that food and source for those blooms. But it also makes that green algae, which is the beneficial that we need for our fishery, right? So we can't have one without the other there, whereas these other reservoirs, all their nutrients kind of flow out and then replenished with fresh, clean water from all the winters, and they don't have a world-renowned fishery like we do.
Yes, we do. Ms. Ryan, I have a question for you. I know that you have been working in Big Valley to deal with the algae for quite a long time, and I believe you've found certain levels of success in what I believe is somewhat like a bubbler or a sprinkler system. I know that I'm getting a lot of calls from, whether it's commercial areas, hotels, or private properties, what can they do, and I'm sure they need to work with Water Resources, it's all on lakebed, but what can they do to take personal responsibility on making this change in their area?
I'm not sure if anything can be done at this point of the year because the lake level is so low, but what we have done on Big Valley shoreline, both on the shoreline and when the tribe owned Clear Lake Vista, formerly known as Ferndale on Soda Bay, is we had either manual water aeration through a water pump and just basically spraying the lake water back into itself to put, to disturb the, you know, anything that might start blooming. And we also had a diffuser that is what you would have in an aquarium. We got it from USA Blue Book's Casco aerator, I think is what it was, and it sits at the bottom and basically, turn it on, you have to hook it up to an energy source, and it bubbles. And that bubbling, that oxygenation, not only stirs up the waters in that area, but it also allows other organisms that are in there to potentially outcompete the cyanobacteria. As Angela said, everybody wants that same fertilizer, the same nutrients that's in the bottom, weeds, you know, plants and cyanobacteria, and if you can get the plants to take it up rather than cyanobacteria, that's great. So if you oxygenate and kind of stir it around early and often, is what we say at Big Valley, do it early and often. So at this point, where it's mostly sludge and scum and the lake level's so low, I think it would be kind of difficult. I know that folks in the county and the cities had airboats, and they were doing things to kind of stir it up. You know, it's a Band-Aid, but if you have to live on that shoreline and you don't want the stench and you don't want that ugliness, then, you know, that's why you do Band-Aids for a little while. We are, obviously, as you know, with the Blue Ribbon Committee and other efforts with the TMDL, there's a lot going on that I would love the public to be more aware of, but it's a long-term fix that needs to happen. Meanwhile, the Band-Aids are aeration and, you know, planting tulies in that area to prevent sediment loading, which is feeding the cyanobacteria. At this point, if they can get a hose out to deeper into the lake and do some sort of spraying system of the lake water, you can't use tap water, you cannot put a chlorinated tap water into the lake, that is an NPDES violation and should be reported. But lake water will stir it up and, you know, but at this point, it's just thick and scummy, I'm not sure what they can do.
Just like anything, it takes time to finalize any project to upgrade the area of someone's property. Algae is not something that's going to disappear if the drought disappears, and so it's something that some people can go ahead and get started on and communicate with the right departments to see what steps need to be taken so that maybe in future years, when the water is not that low, and they're able to actually help mitigate some of these issues that they're dealing with. Because it's rough if you live right next to a large patch of algae blooms.
Bruno, the other thing I wanted to mention at Big Valley, so we've had a multi-pronged approach. Obviously, it's easier because then what the county has to deal with, because we only have so much shoreline, right? But we have, we do storm, we clean our storm drains on a monthly basis. We have booms out in front of all of our culverts in the water, so it's collecting any petroleum products and other things that it should. We also do monitoring at all of our storm drain outlets to see what's coming in there in terms of nutrients and take, you know, response with whatever's happening on the land there. We do tulie replanting on a regular basis. We've replanted hundreds of feet of tulie over the years. We do manual aeration, which means that our guys are hired to do that, and we have, and we also do manual weed removal instead of using chemical control, which basically puts it back down at the bottom to become food for cyanobacteria again. We've been doing all of that since 2011, if not earlier, and, you know, you can look back at the records, the toxin levels on the tribe shoreline has been pretty minimal over the years. When we were doing that, when the tribe owned Clear Lake Vista, we were also in pretty good shape over there in terms of the toxin levels. So, you know, a lot of circumstantial evidence that it's working, but it keeps us busy with, you know, being involved in managing the shoreline on the tribe's shore because, you know, everybody uses it. That is an important water source for the people there, and all of those, the tulies and everything else that's there is an incredibly important part of everybody's lives. So we want to make sure the water stays safe for everybody.
I appreciate that, and I know that the city of Clear Lake is looking at doing some aerosol pipe work as well for some of their park upgrades. It's unfortunate when you have a beautiful coastline to take advantage of and you can't. And so, I think they're trying to use the same type of processes as Big Valley has been using, and I sure hope that they get the same success as you have. Supervisor Scott?
Yes. Just want to thank you for coming out and educating us and the public, and Sarah, mostly, for going out there and correcting misinformation. I see you many times on Facebook when people are giving information and you're right on top of it. You're right on top of correcting what they're saying and educating the public, and that's definitely what is needed, you know, for Lake County. And then, I have a question for Angela with Water Resources. So we're talking about all these different things we can do, not this year because it's too late, but next year, would we need to have any sort of permits, or is there a process to be able to put anything in the lake or do anything with aeration before going forward and doing that?
That is a great question, Supervisor Scott. Thank you for asking me. So the Water Resources Department right now, obviously, the drought and COVID interrupted some of our plans, but we acknowledge that's a gap, and what we don't want to do is have a very convoluted, difficult, expensive permit process for something that can have an overall benefit, that is easy for an individual homeowner to install, that could have immediate impact. So we are in the process of developing kind of like a streamlined way to have people have aeration installed or water mover, there's some dock, water movers, that basically it's an underwater fan, and they can move it, and there's different sizes, and it could be somewhere from $200 or $1,000. You know, there's things like that. We want to be able to provide that permit process very easily. One thing that we do want to track is just some data, right? What is the local impact to dissolved oxygen, which is important for processes for all life in the water? And then, we also just want to know where those activities are occurring on the lake. So we do this permit process, again, we don't want it to be too expensive, but we just want to get everything in a row so it's easy and that we can have that tracking power so we can see, is this something that works? You know, if it is, on a whole, not working or doesn't create any benefit, we want at least have that information. So we are in the process of putting that together because we realize that's something really important that people want, and then, we just want to be able to, is it working? And then, where are these things? Because we are the stewards of the lake, and we want to make sure we have that information because it could help a lot of the programs that we already do. And so, that's a great question, and we're working on it, and we will get back to you next year when we have that, and we'll probably present something, so it's acknowledged and out there, and we'll do some outreach for that.
Because that would be amazing if we can get the community involved, and it's kind of off the back of the county completely, and get those homeowners that live on the lake to help us out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And pull the data from it. That's the most important.
And there is some concern, and other examples in the country, sometimes aeration has actually led to fish kills. This is smaller time, and if it's just water moving or little aerating, that should be fine, but we also don't want to have any of that. Like, if it's something that's oxygenating the water and then there's all of a sudden a cutoff of power, which we've had here, that can all of a sudden lead to a fish kill or a significant bloom. And so, we just want to make sure we consider all those things and fit them in, and it might be worth it if we look at the data and it's something that for most of the year will provide a benefit. So those are things that we're thinking of, that we're considering, but it is important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you for, there we go. Thank you for giving the presentation today. I know that I had sent a lot of information and questions, not only to Denise, but also to the Water Resources Department with constituents in different areas that are concerned about the, you know, the HABs, I guess you call them, H-A-Bs. And so, I just wanted to thank you for that. And I know that on the Blue Ribbon Committee, one of our initiatives is tulie replanting, and a couple of the actually tributaries being, you know, readdressed so that that way there's some flow and work on that as well. So, yes, and then the Prop 68 funds, and then I know that Mr. Crowfoot had told me at the RCRC Committee that there should be something else coming down the line, so I, yeah, wanted to go ahead and mention that as well, so. And I, I don't know, I've sent you some emails because I'm working on something that has to do with aeration as well, I'm not sure if you got it yet, but it's just another, you know, hail mary, you know, for the Band-Aid, because a lot of what we're doing is long-term, you know, the Middle Creek restoration, Blue Ribbon Committee, it's a lot of long-term stuff that's going to take some time, so I'm looking into trying to get some Band-Aids done too, and it's similar to what Supervisor Savatia said, so, thank you again.
And if I remember the numbers correctly, something like 70% of all the nutrients in the lake come through the Middle Creek area, and something about, we can reduce it by about 30 or more percent with the restoration of that area. So I believe those numbers are close, but the idea is that it will reduce the nutrient.
No, there's actually new research showing that might not be the case.
Oh, really?
UC Davis has been looking at what nutrients get released in low oxygen conditions, and that's part of our issue, is that we've got low oxygen down at the bottom of the lake, which is something that happens in lakes. And they're seeing that instead of the 30% or so contribution that they think the in-lake loading, the stuff that's already been in there for decades, could be much, much higher than that. So that means that we've got to come up with a solution for what's happening, you know, what's already in there and keeping it from going back into the cycle of things, which is why the oxygenation, though it's a logistical issue, you know, how to make that work here, it's still an important part of the equation. Middle Creek Project is still an important project. Anywhere where we're reducing the amount of sediment loading that's coming in, brown water when it's raining, you know, that's what we want to try to limit, no matter where it's happening in the lake, but Middle Creek is a great project to have happen.
Absolutely. If there's no further comments from the...
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to ask, just to highlight, because you, I can't answer this question, I'm asked it all the time, you know, and I never studied the lake as thoroughly as you have either. So like, in the 80s, 70s, a lot of people referred to the time when it was more clear, was there, was there studies of the same blooms happening back then? And if there wasn't, or if there is, what would be the difference? Is it, did climate change, or?
I have a little bit of an answer, probably Angela has more. The toxin studies did not really start until, I think, 2013. So the county hired UC Santa Cruz to look at the toxin levels in the lake and also do counts of cyanobacteria. The highest toxin level at that time was 29 micrograms per liter for microcystin, but, and there was a lot of cyanobacteria in 2013, but the toxin levels not so high. Nobody was really measuring toxins prior to that, as far as I know. The World Health Organization did come up with toxin levels and also cyanobacteria cell numbers that they think people should change, you know, caution, warning, danger type thing, back in the 90s. So there was already a knowledge and understanding of cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins back in the 90s, but California didn't really hit on that until much later. So I do know that portion. So I do know that portion.
So one question you asked was, you know, was this happening earlier? And I actually have a newspaper article from The Record Bee from 1968, where they proposed to reroute Pillsbury and the Eel River to come down and flush out Clear Lake. It didn't pass, thank God. But that was, they were so, you know, distraught about the blooms in the lake that they wanted to basically just push them out by adding some, you know, flow. So it's been an ongoing thing. You know, of course, climate change, what happens is, right? We have less precipitation, and then we have a warmer season, right? When have we ever had a summer where June had multiple days of 100-degree weather? We haven't. So it's getting hotter, longer periods with less of that diluting water. So yes, all of that contributes to the bloom period and the conditions that make those bloom events more severe longer and here more often. I have done research, and we see spikes in phosphorus during these drought years. So the state of California has drought data from the last, like 25 years, what they define a drought. And during those periods is when we see consecutive years of phosphorus going up in the lake. And that's the food for the cyanobacteria. So we're definitely seeing those relationships between the drought conditions and these bloom events. And we're probably going to have more droughts, so we'll have more of these bloom conditions.
Thank you for answering that, because I get screamed at, that, you know, the good old days in the 70s and 80s, the lake wasn't as bad, and what's going on, and why aren't we, you know, fixing it? And frankly, you can't fix a lake, you can only heal a lake. It's a living thing, it's a living organism. So, but thank you for answering that.
And I believe that on the Water Resources website, not sure if it's still there, but I remember reading that in the late 1800s, there was a biologist who was talking about how beautiful the area was, but that in August, the lake would become a split pea soup green, where he said wildlife would continue to thrive. And so it's definitely been an ongoing issue of algae. I know there's been an evolution in the algae that has created the lingua that we're seeing and others that we're seeing. But it's, the lake, I think, has historically been shallow and therefore has the capability to create those conditions. I thought that was an interesting read, that it's that long-term that this has been occurring over here. So let's go ahead and open it up to the public unless there's further comments. All right, let's go ahead and open up to the public. I know we've had a hand up here in the boardroom, so let's go ahead and get started before your hand gets tired.
Joan Moss, I broke the story in the 80s about the Superfund site, Superfund Mercury site. And I questioned Dr. Tom Zucanek a couple of years ago. I said, does the cyanobacteria contain mercury? I wish to ask the committee if the toxins in the cyanobacteria is or is not or might be mercury. And if we're not to eat the fish in Clear Lake, is it because of the mercury in the lake? Are the cyanotoxins? Do the cyanotoxins mix up with the mercury? Thank you. And is the site still a Superfund site? And has the problem of mercury been solved?
That's no, that's, yes, it's still a Superfund site, and no, it hasn't been solved. Now, there's still a long way to go on the Superfund site. I do know that the fish advisory for the fish on Clear Lake is, which does allow people to eat a certain amount, depends on whether there are women of childbearing age or a child under 18 versus a man. And there are basically women of childbearing age and children under 18 should not eat any bass from this lake. But men can eat, I believe it's one fish meal a week of bass. And then all of the fish and shellfish of Clear Lake have a rating depending on which category you're in, and that's based on mercury levels. There are no fish advisories for cyanotoxins anywhere in California and possibly anywhere in the States. We do have data at Big Valley for the fish and cyanotoxins. We did a study within Cal EPA EJ Environmental Justice Grant. And we looked at the fish of concern for the tribes and fish and shellfish. And we looked at approximately 100 different fish of 10 different species and the cyan, the microcystin liver toxin level. And there were fish that did have cyanotoxin levels, microcystin levels in the tissue as well as in the liver. So it's not something that has been elevated to the state in terms of, I mean, they haven't created a fish advisory because of cyanotoxins, but we've got some baseline data. So I just want to answer that. You know, in terms of, I mean, cyanobacteria is, I mean, there's some information about cyanobacteria and mercury. It's not, I don't have it. I mean, I really don't, I couldn't answer that part of the question. But I do know that the toxins that are in cyanobacteria are not mercury toxins. I mean, they are neurotoxins or skin toxins or liver toxins. That's what we monitor for. Is there mercury in cyanobacteria? Well, mercury, methylmercury attaches to proteins. So is it possible that cyanobacteria has methylmercury in it? I don't, we certainly haven't tested for that. Don't know if it's out there, but good question. There are people working on it, not me, though.
Thank you for that question. Seeing no more questions in the audience here. Anyone in the Zoom room, just last call for a hand up? All right, let's bring it back. And I will say that I know Supervisor Crandall and myself have been in touch with EPA, who has been giving us some updates as to where we are with the Superfund site and the cleanup. I will just state that it is frustratingly slow. And it's also very frustrating that the responsibility has been deferred to the taxpayers rather than the original mine owners. So that's a little frustrating to me, that we have to end up cleaning up the mess that someone else created. Definitely more impact to the Eland Colony than anyone else. But I think overall, it does impact the lake, especially in that region. So just wanted to provide that update. And I believe we have an upcoming meeting. I just, I remember seeing an email not too long ago, but I don't see it on my calendar quite yet.
It's this month.
It's this month, okay. Anything further from the board? Thank you very much for the update, Director Palmer Roy and your team. I really appreciate the information provided to us as well as the public, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.